Good evening, this is the June 13th meeting of the zoning board of appeals. First up.
Appeal number 2019-015 Meadowcrest Corporation 169 Overhill Road, Waiting River. Tax map number 672-120 RB80 zoning for variances and/or relief from chapter 301, section 30. Where proposed first story living area is 1,122.52 square feet and minimum required is 1,500 square feet. And section 31 where proposed impervious surface is 17.5 percent of lot area and maximum allowed is 15 percent. Proposed front yard setback is 40 feet and minimum required is 60 feet. Proposed rear yard setback is 46 feet and minimum required is 75 feet.
Evening, Mrs. Donowski.
Good evening, as you're well aware, this hearing was continued and renoticed. I have comments to make about this application and the following one, and not to be redundant, but the applications and the comments are similar. As is indicated on the notice, we've got a square footage that if we were to meet the zoning, it would require more variances because it would be a larger house on the same sized lot. So to meet that zoning requirement, which is not in the schedule, but in the content of the language of the section of the code that applies to this zoning district, we have asked for that variance relief as well. I also, because it came up the last meeting, researched the assessors' records and forwarded some information that relates to neighbors and their houses and their size of the houses and the setbacks. And this is merely limited to whatever the assessors had available to them at the time. That isn't show what additional additions or accessory structures may be located on the properties with or without permits. It was merely basic information because one of the issues certainly to be discussed in every variance application is is out of character with the neighborhood. If you look at the sizes of the lots with the tax map information, couple that with the assessors' depiction of the at least initial building permits that may have issued with the sizes of the structures and the setbacks, it provided some comparison for you. I also asked my clients to take some photographs of pictures in the areas that I'll hand up now. And on specific information, one of the questions that came up was the drainage question. And I will note that in front of one of these lots is a drainage in the public improved road. So I'll hand up these pictures as well, which depicts some pictures of the neighbors' properties as well as the drainage structure. With that said, I have a very little other comment to make from what was said the first time around, which is it's not out of character in the neighborhood. They're reasonably sized houses. Some folks might want bigger houses, some might want small, but we have to look at the minimum square footage required by the town and apply them to the size of these particular lots. And with that said, I'd wait and sit down and wait for other comments.
Anyone else to be heard on this matter? Please step up. Young lady, just pull the microphone down a little bit. Were you sworn in last time?
No.
Then raise your right hand, do you swear to tell the truth, nothing but the truth, so help you God?
I do.
And your name and your address.
Okay, Margretta Benlewis, 130 Dogwood Drive, Waiting River. I object to the two variances on both properties on Overhill. The town law in the is there to protect homeowners, so no house would be on top of one another. As far as I'm concerned, let him build smaller houses and comply with the town law. I see no reason why he should encroach on the neighbors. I have 200, about 200 feet of property that parallels to his property, and I can't see why he can't build a smaller house and not have all these changes done. The town of Riverhead said this is what they wanted, to give the people privacy, to people that have a backyard. Across the street, he built the development, and the backyard is so small that you can't even see. It's in Brookhaven. The only reason the house was sold because the parkland is right next to it on Dogwood Drive. So I object to it thoroughly.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Anyone else to be heard? Any questions from Mr. Donowski from board? No one else? Okay. Who's got the reading?
I do, I have the first one. I've certainly considered everybody's opinion. However, Mr. Donowski did give us information that was pertinent, that showed that there's consistency in the setbacks that they're asking for, and I just can't see why we can legally deny them their variance. So I move that the appeal of Meadowcrest Corporation of 169 Overhill Road, Waiting River. Suffolk County tax map is 672-1-20, it's located in the RB80 zoning. For variances and relief from chapter 301, section 30, where the proposed first story living area is 1122.52 square feet and the minimum required is 1,500 square feet. And section 31, where the proposed impervious surface is 17 and a half percent of the lot area and the maximum allowed is 15 percent. Proposed front yard setback is 40 feet and the minimum required is 60 feet. Proposed rear yard setback is 46 feet and the minimum required is 75 feet. Therefore be approved in accordance with the application and sketches with amendments thereof, or thereto, excuse me, if any, as filed with the building inspector.
Second.
Mr. Seabrook.
Aye.
Mr. Whitmire.
Aye.
Mrs. Worthington.
Aye.
Mr. Barnes.
Aye.
And I vote aye, so the appeal has been granted. Let's have the next one.
Appeal number 2019-016 Robert Strucker, 179 Overhill Road, Waiting River. Tax map number 672-1-18.1 RB80 zoning for variances and/or relief from chapter 301, section 30, where first story living area is 1,296.6 square feet and minimum required is 1,500 square feet. And section 31 where proposed front yard setback is 40 feet and minimum required is 60 feet.
Again, Pete Donowski for the applicant. The same comments apply as to the earlier application, the photographs and the depictions of submitted support, the granting of the variance as requested, the same comment is made about the size of the building. The variance as to size is actually looking for a larger building, and we have created a smaller building to be reasonably located on the lot, so I've asked for approval.
Anyone to be heard on this matter? Sure, please step up to the mic. You were sworn in last time, right?
Correct.
Just repeat your name and your address again.
Gabriel Debono, 123 Overhill Road, Waiting River, New York. I was heard last time. My question is, are my comments and statements from my previous testimony will be, or was considered on your...
They were definitely part of the...
Okay, thank you very much.
You're quite welcome. No one else to be heard? Thank you.
I move that the appeal of Robert Strucker at 179 Overhill Road, Waiting River, tax map number 600-72-1-18.1 RB80 zoning for variances and relief from chapter 301, section 30, where first story living area is 1,296.6 square feet and a minimum required is 1,500 square feet. And section 31 where proposed front yard setback is 40 feet and the minimum required is 60 feet. Be granted in accordance with the application and sketches with amendments thereto, if any, as filed with the building inspector.
Second.
Who's second?
Frank.
Frank. All right, Mr. Seabrook.
Aye.
Mr. Whitmire.
Aye.
Mrs. Worthington.
Aye.
Mr. Barnes.
Aye.
And I vote aye, so the appeal has been granted.
Appeal number 2019-005 Christopher and Kristen Donnelly, 668 Soundshore Road, Riverhead. Tax map number 607-33 RA40 zoning for variances and/or relief from chapter 219, section 10B, where proposed additions are within the coastal erosion hazard area, which is not permitted. Chapter 301, section 222B, where proposed eastern side yard setback is 9.6 feet and minimum required is 10 feet. Proposed attached setbacks are 9.1 and 9.6 feet and minimum required is 10 feet. And proposed additions increase gross floor area within existing non-conforming side yard setbacks, representing an increase in degree of non-conformity.
Good evening.
Good evening, Councilman.
I'm Adam Grossman, 120 Court Street, Riverhead. I'm here on behalf of the applicants, Christopher and Kristen Donnelly, and this is our first time on, and so I just want to briefly go over the applications. Essentially, what we have is an application for property of, the address as you know, is 668 Soundshore Road in Riverhead. It is in the RA40 zoning district. The property, the lot, is 0.305 acres. It's actually a very narrow lot that is right up against Long Island Sound, and it's actually on a bluff. So in any case, what my clients are looking to do is they're looking to essentially replace the existing modest sized residence with another modest sized residence. That's what I think that they're looking, what they're looking to do. I also have Rich Bosworth, who is the contractor here and the builder, to answer any questions the board members may have about the project. I believe it's also been reviewed by the planning department as well. I think what we have, at least from my perspective, is modest setbacks on both the west and the east that we're asking for, that are very, in my view, minor in nature in terms of any impact on the neighbors. I will also tell you that the existing house, at least on the west side, is quite a bit closer to the property line, the western property line than what's being proposed. So the only other thing that I think is, that I want to emphasize is that I know that the board members received a letter from the neighbors to the east, 672 Soundshore Road in Riverhead, Hoffman, and they apparently were primarily concerned about the retaining wall and the integrity of the bluff. And, you know, what I can tell you about that is I believe the planning department is in support of what we're proposing. That's my understanding, and that this actually will benefit the neighbors as well as, you know, as my client in terms of making sure that the bluff is secure. In fact, the neighbor, this neighbor, the neighbor to the east, doesn't have such a retaining wall. So we think actually it's a benefit, what we're proposing. However, we're, my clients and I certainly want to hear the input from you as the members of this board as to any concerns that you may have, any questions that you may have. I also went to the property yesterday, and it is quite a stunning property, extraordinary view of the Long Island Sound, and a steep drop from where the property is located going straight down with a walkway to the Long Island Sound.
Nobody taking any selfies?
No.
But I have pictures.
Adam, I have a question.
Sure.
The retaining wall obviously is brand new.
Right.
Was, did that have a permit from the DEC to construct that wall?
It did not.
Okay. I know that there was a letter of non-jurisdiction.
I forgot to mention that, yes.
Yes, I saw it and it was issued, but what about the retaining wall?
Okay.
Let's get somebody up.
Okay.
Well...
Yep, I'll be glad to...
That is required by the state.
Okay, okay, all right.
Even though it's outside the CZM, it's waterward.
Right.
It's water, so it's not our jurisdiction but theirs.
Sure.
So I would think that you would want to include that or amend your application for the letter of non-jurisdiction to make them aware that that wall was built.
Okay, we can certainly do that.
And the wall, I don't know who did it or why they did it that way, but I don't think it's an engineered wall.
Okay.
I would have that looked at.
Okay.
The other thing that I'm going to ask for is that when the house is construction, constructed, I would like to see an environmental engineer oversee the project so that the bluff or the integrity of the bluff is not in any way affected.
Okay.
All right?
Absolutely.
Okay. Thank you.
Just a question, a letter of non-jurisdiction, so would that be something you'd want us to submit to the board before?
Well, the DEC needs to have an application.
Okay.
For the work that was done without the benefit of a permit.
Okay, okay.
Right?
I understand. But we certainly will take care of that immediately.
Okay, that's great.
Yep, okay, all right, thank you.
Anyone else have any questions? All right, let's see if anybody on the, anybody out there have any comments? Nobody?
So, Mr. Chairman, if there are no comments, what I would like to do is that we adjourn the case until the permit application is made. However, I think just the application would suffice for our party.
Okay.
I would, I would, I would think they're going to be involved and they're going to try to regulate it or make sure it's properly designed, whatever the case may be. So I'm requesting that we adjourn it, but I'm only one vote.
You're a big vote here.
No, not necessarily. I just make sure it's done right.
All right, anyone else have any comments about this? Nobody?
Okay.
Let's put this off to the next meeting.
How much time do you need?
Next meeting be enough?
I think we put it on until the next meeting, hopefully we'll be able to get everything in.
The application?
We'll do our best to...
For the retaining wall that was constructed?
You've got to come up, you've got to come up.
And if you create, raise your right hand, do you swear to tell the truth, nothing but the truth, so help you God?
I do.
Just state your name and your address.
Richard Bosworth, 48220 Route 25 in Southhold.
You have the floor.
I'm sorry?
You have the floor.
Oh, thank you. I was just looking for my copy of the DEC letter, because DEC did come to the site and inspect it, and they did not claim jurisdiction of...
For which, which event?
I'm sorry?
To build the house?
They didn't claim any jurisdiction for that, but not ask...
For the house.
Right. And did not ask for...
But you're on the other side of the CZM zone.
Pardon me?
You're on the other side of the coastal zone management line, and you constructed work on the bluff that's protected by their agency.
Understood, but they were not claiming jurisdiction of that, is what I'm saying. They were, they could either do top of bluff or high watermark, correct?
No, that band that you show across the front of the house...
The coastal erosion, right.
That's the CZM one.
Right.
If you look and you go north, the work was constructed on the...
Right.
Not the landward side, the water side.
Right, on the seaward side of the...
So they, they built the wall, they whacked the stairs, and it's just laying out there. The stairs are floating out there. So obviously you have plans to do something eventually.
Oh, that, absolutely, a permit will be, we'll go in for that, for the stairs.
Right, but that, that, that wall will come up.
With DEC or with...
Yeah.
Okay, they said they weren't claiming jurisdiction from that. They were claiming, they were claiming jur- jurisdiction from the high watermark.
They're only probably acting on what you applied for. They probably were only acting on what you applied for.
Okay, well, the lady that was there said that we didn't need to apply to them for the retaining wall, and it wasn't a condition of...
All right. Let's look at the survey.
This is what she told me.
Let's look at the survey.
Okay.
All it does, it says a line across. There's nothing that says retaining wall, there's nothing that says it was constructed recently. You didn't propose the work, construct that wall.
Right, that was done before I was...
You just did it.
No, that was, that was way before I was in the picture, so...
That's fine.
I'm just letting you know.
I understand that. The neighbor's concern is more obvious than ever is the, is the integrity of the bluff.
Right.
Okay? So you as a contractor, if you look at that wall, I don't think you would agree that it was built correctly.
If I may...
You may.
I've taken some photos...
Maybe I'm missing something.
Of the existing and the new during construction. Can I?
Yeah, sure, come on up. So you have pictures of the wall?
I have pictures of the pre-existing wall and of the new wall during construction that the owner gave me.
The owner gave you that, but you weren't involved in the construction of it?
Absolutely not.
Okay.
And it's hard to tell from the black and white photos...
No, that's okay.
But the original wall was built out of dog fur, not treated lumber. There were two by sixes, some were two by eights, there were no dead men, you know, there was, there were no tiebacks into the bluff at all.
The point I'm making is that, and it looks nice, but was it engineered by a, by an engineer?
Absolutely, I would guess not.
Okay.
I would guess not.
So the DEC would ask you how it was built, they would ask you, was it engineered correctly? And do you have an architect or landscape engineer, architect to, to see if this was done correctly?
Okay.
So will withstand, when you remove that house and you have an excavator in there, will that withstand that kind of pressure and will it preserve the integrity of the bluff?
Okay.
I don't think this was applied for to the DEC.
No, definitely was not, they said it wasn't.
It needed a permit.
Okay.
That's all I could say.
Okay.
If you get an application and you make it to them, and they say, oh, we don't, we don't really care you built something on our bluff, I'm fine with it.
Okay.
Okay, that's where I am. Thank you for the photos.
All right, so we understand where we're at right now, so we'll put you off to the next meeting.
I just want to make sure, you will be submitting the application and you're looking also for a response from the, from the DEC to the application?
Well, I would like to see something.
I, I understand. So I'm hoping we're going to have a response by the next meeting, but if we don't, what I'd like to do is have the option of...
Well, I would think that if you make the application and you stamp it in and you bring it back and I get to look at it, all of us...
Okay.
That would be up to them to either notify the building department or ask the building department, is there anything on file?
Okay.
So that it can move forward with the building permit.
Okay.
Believe me, I'm not trying to slow this down.
Okay.
I'm trying to adj- address the neighbor's concerns of this integrity of the bluff, and this will do that.
Mm-hmm.
Because them knowing that that integrity is going to be maintained...
Mm-hmm.
Everybody will be happy.
Yeah, okay.
And will live in harmony up there.
Yep, I, I hope so.
That's the hope.
Okay.
Okay.
All right.
All right, nobody else to be heard on this matter?
I got it.
Okay, let's send in a German.
Mr. Chairman, I move appeal number 2019-005 Christopher and Christine Donnelly, no, Donnelly, be adjourned to June 27th, is that correct?
Second.
Mr. Barnes.
Aye.
Mrs. Worthington.
Aye.
Mr. Whitmire.
Aye.
Mr. Seabrook.
Aye.
And I vote aye, so the seat folks at the next meeting.
Very good, thank you all.
Counsel, can you come here for a second?
Of course.
Just look at the first paragraph, based on the information you have submitted.
Right.
They don't have all the information.
Yep.
That's what I was trying to...
Thank you.
And I appreciate you pointing it out.
Okay, no problem.
Okay.
Thanks very much. You're on court.
609 Northville Turnpike, do you have, after David sent posting?
When is that printed, too?
The 27th?
So on the last hearing that we just had, can you make it a note to forward that to the neighbors who wrote the email and tell them that this, it was adjourned, if they would like to attend? Thank you.
Got everything? All right, who's up to speak for the, oh, go ahead.
Appeal number 2019-018 609 Northville Turnpike LLC, 609 Northville Turnpike, Riverhead. Tax map number 600-106-314 RA40 zoning for variances and/or relief from chapter 301, section 10, where parcel one proposed front yard is 40 feet and minimum required is 50 feet. Proposed side yard and combined side yard are 10 feet and 25 feet and minimum required is 25 feet and 55 feet. Where proposed rear yard is 40 feet and minimum required is 60 feet. Where parcel two proposed side yard and combined side yard 11.2 feet and 41.2 feet and minimum required is 25 feet and 55 feet. Where proposed impervious lot coverage is 30.2 percent and maximum permitted is 15 percent. Where proposed lot sizes are 13,499 square feet for parcel one and 8,512 square feet for parcel two and minimum required is 40,000 square feet. And section 243C3 where proposed lot sizes are 13,499 square feet parcel one and 8,512 square feet parcel two, which are less than one half of the required lot area and minimum required is 20,000 square feet.
Just kindly raise your right hand, are you an attorney?
No.
Do you swear to tell the truth, nothing but the truth, so help you God?
I do.
State your name and your address.
Monica Meduski, 30 Stoller Drive, East Quack, 11942. So I'm representing the developer for this particular lot. We are asking for a relief of variances as noted and read by Carissa. We previously met with the planning board in March of 2018 to propose a subdivision of the lot, as you can see on the survey included with this application. This resulted in requirements to ask relief and mention variances. We think they are reasonable to the size of the created lots at the existing neighborhood. We improved the parcel two with renovating one-story, single-family residence of around 1,400 square feet. This house was vacant and we took care of multiple call violations issued by the, to the previous owner since 2017. On lot one, we're proposing to build a similar structure about 1,600 square feet, one family residence, this parcel is currently vacant. We think that the proposed variances and size of the house are reasonable as far as location, size of the lot, which seems to be consistent with the character of the surrounding neighborhood, as well as distance to surrounding houses. The building envelope proposes setbacks are per previous zoning use district resident C, as you can see on the survey. There is a public water access available. The new residents could also easily connect to the Riverhead sewer district, and we will also obtain access to the house with the county right of way by contacting Suffolk County GPW. You could see the access proposed on the survey. You have some questions?
Was parcel two owned by the county at one time?
Not that I know of.
Not that one?
No.
Okay, just thought I'd ask. It's pretty close. So is parcel two rented out?
No, it's vacant right now because we're trying to subdivide, so that was...
So you have no tenant?
No.
Okay. So both houses will be rental houses, I take it?
They will be sold to...
So you're going to sell them, you're not going to rent them yourselves or your clients?
Yes. Yes, we're gonna sell them, yes.
Okay. All right, just wanted to know.
Okay.
Cause I wanted you to be aware, if you do keep them, you need rental permits.
Okay, yeah, no, I know.
Okay, good. Thank you.
Any other board members have any questions?
No.
And the sewer there, right?
Yes.
That's a whole month.
Anyone else to be heard on this matter? How about that?
I move that appeal of six oh nine Northville Turnpike LLC and six oh nine Northville Turnpike Riverhead, tax map number six hundred one oh six dash three dash fourteen, RA forty zoning for variances and relief from chapter three oh one, section ten, where parcel one proposed front yard is forty feet and minimum required is fifty feet. Proposed side yard, combined side yard are ten feet and twenty-five feet, and minimum required is twenty-five feet and fifty-five feet. Where proposed rear yard is forty feet and forty-one point two feet, and a minimum required is twenty-five feet and fifty-five feet. Where proposed impervious lot coverage is thirty point two percent, and the maximum permitted is fifteen percent. Where proposed lot size are thirteen thousand four hundred ninety-nine square feet parcel one, eight thousand five hundred twelve square feet parcel two, and a minimum required is forty thousand square feet. And section two forty-three C three, where proposed lot sizes are thirteen thousand four hundred ninety-nine square feet parcel one, and eight thousand five hundred twelve square feet parcel two, which are less than one-half of the required lot area, and a minimum required is twenty thousand square feet. Be granted in accordance with application in the sketches with amendments thereto, if any, as filed with the building inspector.
Second.
Okay. Mr. Seabrook.
Aye.
Mr. Whitmire.
Aye.
This is Worthington.
Aye.
Mr. Barnes.
Aye.
And I vote aye. See, appeal's been granted. In about two weeks from now, old paperwork should be ready for you, we can continue on your project.
All right, thank you very much. Thank you.
Appeal number two thousand nineteen zero one nine, Kaywood Family Trust, northwest corner of Middle Country Road and K, K Road, Calverton. Tax map number six hundred one fifteen point one, one twenty-two, RV eighty zoning for variances and or relief from chapter three oh one, section thirty-one, where proposed lots are forty-nine thousand four hundred eighteen point four and forty-nine thousand four hundred eighteen point five square feet, and minimum required is eighty thousand square feet.
Are you an attorney?
I am.
State your name and your address, please.
Good evening, Mr. Chairman, members of the board. Larry Davis, one seventy-five Oak Street, Patchard, New York, for the, for the applicant. We're here to ask for a division of a two point two-six acre parcel into two equally divided pieces of one point one-three acres, where each parcel meets all of the zoning characteristics with the exception of lot area. The areas surrounding this are all smaller lots, this lot would conform to the existing pattern of the existing neighborhood, and it would not be detrimental to the community at all for the granting of this application. So, I know it's in the compatible growth area of the Pine Barrens, we can comply with the clearing restrictions. We are, um, in compliance with the Health Department standards of forty thousand square feet, and if the board has any questions, I'd be happy to answer them at this time.
Has the property been purchased by?
Yes, it has.
Kaywood Family Trust, is there a title search?
Uh, there was a title search done, yes, there are no covenants existing on the property at, at, at the present time.
Do you have a copy of the title search?
I think that was submitted to planning already.
I'm not sure if we have it.
I have a single copy here, if the board would like to see it.
I would like to see it. It'll probably be easier if we just make a copy of it.
And we can do that.
So you're saying in your title search, this was never part of that subdivision as an open space area? For K Road?
That is correct. It's been reviewed, um, by planning, and it was shown that there were no existing covenants on that property at all.
Okay. Thank you, sir.
What are these homes gonna be used for, Mr. Davis, are they gonna be rentals, sale?
No, they are for sale, um, the Kaywood Family Trust, the, um, trustees are builder developers, and they build for sale, they do not build for rental.
Okay. So, this Leighton estate back in sixty-six, were there maps filed, were these filed maps?
I am not sure.
So when you, did, did you do the conveyance?
I represented the applicant, yes, when they, when they purchased the property.
So when you did the deed description, you can't remember if they, if they, uh, cited, uh, file map number, lot number?
Thank you, Todd.
I believe this is described property, I do not believe it is a filed lot on an old file map.
Okay. So, I think what, what we have to do, I know, I know people in Stuart Title, but what I was curious about is, was the filed map ever reviewed? Um, and in the filed map itself, it talks about where the covenants are open space areas. Uh, it doesn't necessarily mean that...
Okay, I found this on the web for space area.
Hey! Can you see, uh, can you get me the, the map? Um, so anyway, I was concerned about the subdivision, the subdivision and, and open space area. So what I'm gonna ask you to do is to try to find the map of that whole subdivision.
The, the one directly to the north?
Yes.
Okay.
And I know Meadowcrest, section four, I think leads up past that side road, so.
Certainly.
Um, you can have your title search back.
No, that's mine.
That's yours.
Oh, it's mine now? Oh, thank you. We'll thank you. Um, I, I would highly recommend that you get a copy of that map and look at, and make sure that's an open space area, or make sure that was just these simple and it was the remainder of it.
We will do that.
You certainly don't wanna get halfway through and then somebody discovers that.
That is certainly true, although...
Of course, the title company will suck wind on that one.
Just a little bit.
I just don't wanna see that happen, but, other than that, after you provide those to us, I would also caution you as to the driveways, they look very, well, let's say, let me ask you this.
Yes.
Did the planning board make any statement about those driveways going on to twenty-five?
They did not. In fact, there was a question whether they wanted a single driveway or two separate driveways, and the last comments that we received were that they were okay with the two separate. They were worried about us being able to comply with SWIP, the Stormwater Prevention, uh, Pollution Plan, and they were worried about our clearing. We're, we're allowed to clear, I believe, approximately a half acre per site. So, we don't have any issues with having a problem with clearing, we certainly are not gonna clear that much property on each of the two sites, so, um...
Are you in the jurisdiction of the Pine Barrens as well?
We're in the compatible growth area.
You're in the compatible growth?
That's correct.
You don't have jurisdiction over that. And I know. Okay? So, yeah.
Greg's information on this subdivision?
Yeah. Oh, thank you.
Mr. Barnes, by the way, I have a letter from Pyramid showing that there are no covenant and restrictions of record.
It doesn't mean that...
I understand.
It could be on the filed map.
I, I understand.
And it may not encompass that piece. And I don't wanna see you go that far ahead of yourself.
And the deed description is, um, as I had indicated, is described property.
Yes.
Yes.
Well, those old maps will reveal to you what took place back in the sixties, hopefully. Um, and, and of course, you have to remember, we adopted zoning a couple of years before that, so, everybody was very eager to, uh, and I'm quite sure they pushed that, that subdivision back off the street to keep that buffer on twenty-five. And that's what I need to see.
I understand.
Okay. So, I think we consider all other people that wanna be heard for it.
Yes.
And then, uh...
Anyone else to be heard on this matter?
Get that map, subdivision map. And we'll be in business.
Okay, let's have a...
So, do you think you can get a copy of that map?
Have it right here.
The filed map. Beautiful. Let's see it. Is that filed in sixty-six? Yes, it was. Oh, fifty-five. Fifty-five. All right, so, we need a cop, did you get a copy of the abstract on that?
I actually don't recall where that came from, to tell you the truth.
Well, this is Calverton, Edkins, section two, abstract number's twenty-five thirty-eight. So you gotta get the abstract. Can you do that?
We can do that.
Thank you. Nineteen fifty-five, I was born that year. You can have that back.
I wasn't even a twinkle.
Now you're sticking it to me, okay. So I think we should, uh...
Adjourn.
Adjourn it until you can provide a...
The twenty-third?
An abstract?
Twenty-seven.
Twenty-seven. Okay.
You know what would be helpful? If you get the abstract, scan it, email it to Carissa, and she'll forward it to us.
Terrific.
And then we come back on the twenty-seventh, we know that's all clear. And I am gonna talk to some planning board members to see if they had no problems with that backing out business, but...
Would you consider making some kind of joint driveway to the north, where the, where the homes, the backyards work to the, work to Middle Country Road? So they, the driveways, uh, you know, exited or entered onto K Road?
According to Ms. DeVito, the expediter, the planning board, did not want that.
Okay. Yeah, I don't think, I, I don't, I don't know.
All right, well, let's, let's see on the twenty-seventh, we'll have some more input by then.
Okay, uh, Mr. Chairman, I move that the appeal number nineteen dash zero one nine, Kaywood Family Trust, be adjourned to June twenty-seventh.
Second.
Mr. Barnes?
Aye.
This is Worthington.
Aye.
Mr. Whitmire.
Aye.
Mr. Seabrook.
Aye.
And I vote aye. So see you folks on the twenty-seventh.
Thank you very much, have a good evening.
Thank you.
And you shouldn't have had that thick, that's not fair. Thick or thin? I'm jealous, pal.
Yeah, I got a blue sweep all over, what are you talking about? Otto has a good head of hair.
Off you go.
Implants?
Appeal number two thousand nineteen zero two one, Robert D. and Janice Leonti, seventy-six Fern Road, Bating Hollow, tax map number six hundred thirty-eight three twenty point six, RA forty zoning for variances and or relief from chapter three oh one, section eleven, where addition is proposed, detached garage in the front yard, accessory extru-, accessory structures are not permitted in front yard.
Good evening, Mr. Cuddy, always a pleasure.
Good evening, it's a pleasure to be here, thank you. This is a home that's in Oak Hills, East Fern Road, it was constructed in nineteen eighty-seven. And as noted in the denial letter, the zoning board actually approved the garage in the front yard. Um, that was by appeal eighty-six, day sixty-one. In nineteen eighty-eight, CO for the house was issued, I think that's part of your file, if you don't have it, I do have it here with me. It was for a single family residence with a two-car garage. Um, the CO was issued to Kenneth Novak and William Day. And they subsequently, in nineteen ninety-six, had that house sold to my clients, Leontis. Um, and when I say they did, they sold it to the Bowman's in nineteen ninety-six, I'm sorry. And the Bowman's sold it to Leontis in two thousand and three. We're here because the Leontis wanted to sell this house, and in preparation for that, they went to the building department to check, to see where the setic system was. When they looked at the surveys, the old surveys in the file, they found out that the garage, which was in the front yard, had an addition to it. It's a nine-by-thirteen addition that was added onto it. They became very concerned because they certainly weren't aware of that. And so, in an unusual thing, they're actually saying, can we fix up something, uh, that was done probably twenty-five years ago? And it's been there for twenty-five years. What we're asking the board to do is look at this, the building inspector originally was Mr. Hammond. The letter in your file is signed by Mr. Murphy, that's because I wasn't able to get to this in due time because of my schedule. But Mr. Hammond went, looked at it, and said the only thing that's improper is that the addition was in the front yard. And again, this addition is essentially a hundred and seventeen square feet, it doesn't impact anybody. It's been there, as I said, for more than twenty-five years. Um, certainly, this type of variance doesn't impact the community, it doesn't have any environmental impact. It's not really substantial, it's a little bit more than a shed. But the people are asking that the board approve it so they can sell their house in proper form, because when they got it, it was not in proper form, much to their surprise. They certainly didn't create the situation, it was something that was done apparently by the original owner.
So, Mr. Cuddy, if I go, I went through the file today in the building department. I did notice that Fred mentioned something about a, a lofted apartment, has that been removed?
Had, yes. They, they have only used it for storage, they only want it for storage. He one time proposed to them that they could get an accessory apartment. They did not want that, they do not want that. They only want it for storage.
So, okay, if that's the case, then did they remove and revert it back to storage?
They've, they've not done...
Is there an apartment in there now?
There's not an apartment, there's, there were places where people had an apartment at one time, they have not used it, they have just stored things in it.
Okay, that's, that's fine. But physically, if I went there tomorrow, and I went through those wood steps and I went inside, is there sheet rock inside, is it a habitable space?
Yes, there's sheet rock inside.
Is there a kitchen inside?
There was a kitchen, I don't think there's a kitchen there now.
Did you see it, or did...
I did, I did not see it, but they wanted to, here, they certainly... And they can tell you.
Okay, so can they come up to the mic?
Sure.
Thanks.
We just have to hear from one of you. So, do you swear to tell the truth, nothing but the truth, so help you God?
Yes.
Kindly state your name and your address.
Janice Leonti, seventy-six Fern Road East, Bating Hollow, New York.
So here's the question, what's going on with that?
What we want to do is we wanna bring this in compliance with what we need to do. Um, we are not selling the house immediately, but down the road, we would like to retire and sell the house, we want everything to be legal. So that's what we'd like to do.
What the question was, is there an apartment there?
We're not using it as an apartment, there is a bathroom in the garage, and the addition that's in question is, uh, there's a heat duct that goes in there, that's, that's about it.
Is there a kitchen in there?
Yes.
There's a kitchen in there, yes.
Okay.
Which we're willing to remove, we don't even know what we have to do to, you know, bring it to code, or whatever.
I know that the building inspector, Jack, back in January, said that that has to be removed.
We're willing to do that.
We are.
Oh, absolutely, yeah, we have no interest, no interest in, you know, having anything that's not right. Because this was, um, something that we did not know of when we bought the house, we were handed a CO for the house and the garage, and we assumed that everything was legal, our title company picked up nothing on this, um, so...
A lot of times, they don't get inside the structures, so that, that can be...
There was someone who went inside and, and...
Oh, really?
Yes, from our mortgage company, and, you know...
Oh, that's good.
So, you know, it, yeah, we, we got blindsided by this, but nonetheless, whatever, we don't know what we have to do to bring it to legal, you know. We're willing to do whatever we have to do, cause we have no interest in renting it or using it or anything. You know, we just want it to be... You know, we just want it to be where someday when we sell the house, someone comes in and it's all legal. That's it, no headaches.
Okay. So, so you'll get a demolition permit to remove those items?
Um, yes, okay.
Okay, that's back.
Do you swear to tell the truth, nothing but the truth, so help you God?
I do.
Name and your address.
Yes.
Robert and Leonti. We will, we are willing to do whatever we have to do to make it legal, so when we eventually go to sell the house, it's, it's a, you know, a done deal. Uh, we, we, there are no surprises for the...
Most people have that problem.
For, for, no surprises for the next people. You know, what we're going through is unbelievable. We simply went to see where the cesspool was, the size of the cesspool, and Janice discovered this survey, which, which did not list the structure, which really blindsided us. We had no idea, we went to a closing, we did what we had to do, and then years later now, you know, we're faced with this.
They have any, uh, legal, uh, anything legal go against the title company, or anything that gave them...
Nah.
It's, it's been a long time, and, and we researched that, and we, we have no recourse.
I'm just asking my legal, uh, eagle over here, she's up on all this stuff.
It doesn't seem fair, but, but what do we have to do?
Here's what I'm willing to do. I'll tell you what I'm willing to do, and then the other board members can speak on their behalf.
Okay.
If they would like to. I would think you'd file for a demolition permit with the building department, stamp it in, bring us a copy back on the twenty-seventh.
A demolition permit?
To remove the kitchen in the garage. And then, I would vote yes for it, how's that?
So, so it's simply to remove the kitchen?
To remove the illegal items.
They have no problem doing that, that was their intention all the time.
That's good, okay.
It's just, it's a unique situation, I've never had somebody come in and say, there's a wrong, I wanna write it, that's what they're really doing.
That is quite shocking.
How many years you, have you been doing this, Mr. Cuddy?
A long time, and it's the first time.
Okay, Mr. Cuddy. All right, we're gonna put you folks off to the twenty-seventh? And, um...
And you'll file the permit, Mr. Cuddy, and she could scan it and send it to us, or you could just file it and she'll bring it to the next meeting?
We will.
And then you folks don't even have to come here, if you don't want to, we'll be, uh...
My question is, is, is that something we could, I can physically do, remove what has been...
If you're strong enough, sure.
Yes, I, I'm capable of doing that.
As long as you get your inspections from the building department, that's all that counts.
Very good.
Mr. Cuddy'll tell you how it really works.
Very good, thank you so much.
Okay.
Thank you. And, uh, you, you were right to get Mr. Cuddy, he's one of the nicest gentlemen around.
Yeah. Thank you so much for coming in tonight.
Thank you so much.
All right, let's have a...
Uh, Mr. Chairman, I move that appeal number nineteen dash zero one, Robert P. and Janice Leonie, Leon, Leonti?
Leonti.
Be, uh, adjourned till, um, June twenty-seventh.
A second?
Thank you for your time.
Hey, oh.
Thank you.
Mr. Barnes.
Aye.
Mr. Worthington.
Aye.
Mr. Whitmire.
Aye.
Mr. Seabrook.
Aye.
And I vote aye.
Thank you.
Have a good night.
Take or care. Do we hear a motion to accept the minutes of the last meeting?
Wait a minute. Yes.
So moved.
Second one.
What about, what about the letter on, uh, with the wall down on the bay? Is that anything that we're talking about tonight?
Um, only if you wanted to talk about it in the work session. Oh, we could talk about it now, if you'd like.
No, because they didn't fulfill the obligations as far as the variance.
Well, I think we all made comments, and I would think whoever's giving directions today would try to follow that.
Dawn, yeah, but, Dawn.
Dawn's, I, well, Dawn just gave her two cents, she wouldn't be a part of...
Well, she would write the legal affirmation, cause there's, you know, I'm getting tired of these variances that we grant. Some of them never get done. The conditions we put on these variants.
We know that.
Well, yeah, but I don't like it.
One-eleven Suez Avenue's one. Never comply.
Speaking of condi, speaking of conditions, could we have just imposed a condition? I mean, it's too late now, but, I mean, uh, where they removed the kitchen?
Well, there, there has to be an inspection.
The problem is, Frank, a lot of the conditions are not read.
Right, all right.
And permits are issued.
I agree with that, yes.
So, we, at least we know we have a demolition permit, it's in the file.
Ten-four.
Whoever takes over in the future, they'll know.
Yeah.
There was, there's a kitchen in there.
Well, I think we should have a good building inspector, and Frank, I think you would make a very good proposal.
I hope so.
All right, let's get back to, let's get back to business. Do I hear a motion to accept the minutes of the last meeting?
So moved.
Aye.
All in favor?
Aye.
Do I hear a motion to adjourn?
So moved, Mr. J.
Second?
All in favor?
Aye. Good night, folks.
Good night.
Good night, Gracie.